Can I get a motion to open, please? Trustee Simone, can I get a second? Second. Vice President Savino, all in favor?
Aye.
Could you please join me in the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. So, good evening Mahopac community. This is our regular January meeting, which was postponed last week because of weather. But fortunately, we were able to reschedule for tonight. Thank you. I just want to thank, also want to thank trustee Simone and trustee Martin for the excellent job that they and their highway department have been doing on keeping our roads clear and safe. So, thank you very much for putting those down. Okay. What we have is, so we're going to go right into, we've got a pretty nice agenda for this evening. I think you'll find it very enlightening. So, what I'd like to do will be enlighten. What I'd like to do right now is I'd like to turn it over to our illustrious superintendent of schools, Mr. Anthony DiCarlo, for a presentation.
Thank you, President. Now we know it's on. Thank you, President Mondi. And good evening to everybody in attendance today and students, board members. I have the honor tonight of presenting a gentleman, an administrator, a friend, a mentor, a coach, a true professional, a caring individual, a listener, a collaborator, a role model, a second father to students, and somebody who really cares deeply about the Mayopac Central School District. This person has demonstrated time in and again and again his passion for learning. He was so vitally instrumental in the development of our readers and writers workshop here in the Mayopac Central School District. And those of you know, four years ago, we talked about a strategic roadmap and a plan. And we talked about continuity of instruction across our elementary schools. So, it didn't matter whether you were at Austin Road, Lakeview, or former, that our students K to five were going to get the same kind of high-quality rigorous education in reading, writing, and math. This administrator didn't hesitate taking the lead. Came to us from New York City where he had done some of this work. And he began coaching teachers, not only in his school, Austin Road, but throughout the district. He would lead work sessions, professional development sessions. And you could see by our fellow teachers and administrators that he had a passion and a desire just for that. Because he knows how important reading and writing is and how important that is to instill in students who are in elementary school. The foundation for reading and writing takes place K to three, and those years are so vitally important. And he never waned. He would continue his own professional learning and his own professional development as an AP and working at Austin Road. People fell in love with him, the kids, students, the parents. And then we were fortunate enough that after Mr. Gardner retired, this individual, Mr. Gilligan stepped up and became the leader of Austin Road. And didn't skip a beat, continued being that coach, that mentor, that friend, that colleague, that problem solver, and somebody who just wore his passion on his sleeve. I came to really understand his dedication, the hours that this gentleman put into school before and after, so very detail-oriented, cared about everything going right, whether it was academically for kids, whether it was socially emotionally for kids, whether it was a thanks before school or after school, or a trunk or treat, or reconstituting the way that, you know, drop-off and pick-off has gone on for the last two years because of COVID. Whatever needed to be done, Mr. Gilligan did it. He did it with a smile. He did it with collaboration, passion, and just a love as an educator. Mr. Gilligan will be very missed here at the Mayopac Central School District. In some ways, we're heartbroken, but in other ways, we've been blessed to have that time with him here. He is a true professional. I know my cabinet. I know his staff, his teachers, his parents, and the kids are going to miss him with all their heart. So, on behalf of myself, the Board of Education, and the community of the Mayopac Central School District, Mr. Gilligan, we ask you to please come up. I'm going to present you with this. Mr. Gilligan, appreciation for all you've done for the Mayopac Central School District. So, sir, come on up.
Thank you, Mr. DiCarlo, for that heartfelt speech to the administrative cabinet, President Mondi, and the board. I just want to thank you. This is certainly the most difficult professional decision I've ever had to make in my life. I was planning on being up here 20 years from now, maybe able to retire. But unfortunately, life throws us in a curveball. But I can't thank you enough for the opportunity that you've given me to be able to work and be part of the Austin Road community. It's an amazing group of teachers, staff members, students, and parents. And it has been an absolute joy to be able to work with them over these last six years. And I've enjoyed every minute of coming to school. Mayopac, before I came here, I really didn't know much about it, and now it's become my second home. Some might say it's my first time. But I do it because I love it. It's been a true passion of mine during my time here. I want to thank Mr. Bob Meyer, who will be coming and being able to replace me as principal in February. Someone that's retired, familiar with the building. I know the staff is very happy with that choice. The building will be in great hands with him. And also, Mrs. Shel Tweed, who's our assistant principal, who I've had the great pleasure of being able to work with over this last year and a half, hand-in-hand making decisions. Austin Road will be fine moving forward. His teachers are absolutely amazing. The students are amazing, and the building will be able to move forward. I also want to be able to thank my fellow administrators, the elementary admin team, Mrs. Montillo, Mr. Chadwick, Mrs. Blesser, and Mrs. Chaney. It's been an amazing last two years that we've been through. It takes a strong team to be able to get through it. The administrative team we have here, the laughs we've had been able to have, the tough decisions we've been able to make. You can only do that with great people. And it has stemmed from Mr. DiCarlo's leadership, the admin team that we have here, to be able to get us to the position that we are. And it's an absolute pleasure to say that I've worked in Mayopac. I consider these people family now. No matter what my future holds, I might not keep in contact, and I can't. Again, thank you for the support in something that is extremely hard to do. I still don't know when next Friday is going to look like for me on my last day. But it will certainly be an emotional day. And when I say goodbye to this staff, it will just be a goodbye to them. But I still want to stay in touch as we move forward. Thank you so much. Again, Mr. DiCarlo, thank you for your heartfelt words. Thank you.
Very nice. And congratulations, Brian, and thank you again for everything that you've done for the Mahopac Central School District and, of course, the kids and parents and staff over at the Austin Road Schools. Thank you for that. So, we have some housekeeping that didn't have any comments on our agenda items. So, what I'll do is we'll go down and we'll go for a motion to approve the treasurer's report for November 2021. A motion, please. Vice President Savino, second.
Second.
Trustee Simone, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And then we, excuse me. For the warrants, a motion for the warrants for November 2021. A motion to accept, please. Trustee McDonough, second. Trustee Ben Gilulo, all in favor?
Aye.
The revenue status report for November 2021. Motion to accept.
As moved.
Trustee Martin, very strenuous, very deliberate endorsement. Can I get a second, please?
Second.
Vice President Savino, all in favor?
Aye.
Budget transfers from November 2021. A motion to accept, please.
Over.
Second. Vice President Savino and trustee Simone, all in favor?
Aye.
How about the regular meeting minutes for December 21st, 2021? A motion to accept, please.
Over.
Trustee Simone, again. Second.
Second.
Trustee McDonough, all in favor?
Aye.
I'd like to go right now over to our illustrious superintendent, Mr. Anthony DiCarlo, for his very informative superintendent's report. Mr. DiCarlo.
Thank you very much, President Mondi. And as I'm sure you're all aware, this opening is pretty important, dealing with what we've had to deal with the past week. As has happened throughout the pandemic, we as school officials continue to be put positions of having to interpret sudden and sometimes last-minute changes to COVID policies. We all understand that this leads to frustration, confusion for everyone, that students, parents, educators, and our staff. We continue to lack the clarity of these issues, as I have repeated since the start of the pandemic. We are not lawyers. We are not health experts or politicians. Yet, we are constantly caught in the crosshairs. There are many questions the public I know has regarding the mask mandate and the issues on Monday with regards to the courts and the temporary of the mask being lifted. I would like to recommend the following to the Board of Education as we move forward. As a school district, we have followed the requirements set down from the state of New York as part of the requirements under the New York State law. Throughout the pandemic, we have spent hours after hours in consultation with our school attorneys and our insurance company, NYSER, to make sure that all decisions were in compliance with our fiduciary responsibility and our legal exposures, not to mention the possible loss of state aid, which for us would be approximately $31 million for not following the appropriate mandates issued by the New York State Education Department and Chancellor. Should the mask mandate be lifted, we expect that our bus masking will continue as that's a part of a different statute. I would recommend that the Board of Education will consult with ourselves and our medical director and subsequently, based on those findings, establish a protocol moving forward. As of today, student, staff, and guests must continue to mask in schools until the district communicates with you the mask requirement for public schools has changed. Please understand that should the mask mandate be lifted, the district will need additional time to inform the community of these new procedures before enacted. This will give families a necessary time to decide whether or not their children will continue to wear a mask in school and prepare their children for the shift in our procedures. This will also give the Mayopac Central School District time to review any pertinent information to ensure our actions are appropriate and our communication is accurate as we continue to prioritize the health and safety of our students, staff, and faculty. We will continue to monitor the court decisions closely and communicate with you as soon as possible when information is shared with the district that addresses masking in our schools. As we move forward, a couple of great things have happened over the last couple of months and a half since we've been here. You know, we always talk about how do our students do after they graduate Mahopac High School? How prepared were they? Well, we have two Princeton seniors and one Oxford student who are named SAC Scholars, which is a national prestigious award. Princeton seniors, and one of them is our own Sydney Hughes, okay, have been named recipients of the Daniel M. Sachs Class of 1960 Graduating Scholarship, one of Princeton University's highest awards. Hughes from Mahopac, New York, has committed herself to addressing the climate crisis in ways both large and small. At Princeton, she is concentrating in chemical and biological engineering and pursuing certificates in sustaining energy and German. She claims to use her SAC global scholarship to spend two years at the Technical University of Munich, Germany, working with one of the world's leading hydrogen-fueled cell research teams. She hopes to help tackle the challenges of developing cheaper, more sustainable catalysts for use in fuel cells in the electrolysis process that produces hydrogen fuel. Her awards include Tau Beta Phi National Engineering Society and the DuPont Senior Thesis Fellowship Grant. Congratulations to Sydney Hughes. We are so, so proud. Next up, we have senior wrestler Angelo Centrum, who won his 100th career match on December 4th of 2021 while competing at the Austining Tournament. Angelo is a four-year starter for the former Mahopac and has been captain for three years. During his freshman year, Angelo placed second at the Section 1 Championships, which qualified him for the New York State High School Federation State Championships. Angelo finished in fifth place. As a sophomore, Angelo won the Section 1 Championship in his weight class and once again completed in the New York State School Association State Championships. Unfortunately, he had a short season during Angelo's junior year due to COVID. Now, as a senior, Angelo has accumulated 132 career wins and has won every tournament he has been in this year, his senior year. Angelo's ultimate goal is to win a state championship this season. Angelo, congratulations. And this is from our drama department. It is of great pleasure that I share the following about what a Mayopac Central School District's best and brightest, Ritesh Rajan, class of 2007. A successful actor in both film and television for some time now, has his latest critically acclaimed film premiering on Netflix this Friday. The film, Definition Please, is already receiving rave reviews. I was fortunate enough to attend the East Coast premiere of the film several weeks ago, and I can honestly say that this is a work of art. Ritesh will be participating in a tweet-along Friday night at 8:00 PM to celebrate the film, and we'll be tweeting as well as watching it with him. I urge you all to take a look at it on Netflix. Again, it is Definition Please by a Mahopac graduate, 2007, Ritesh Rajan. Congratulations. So, what is really noteworthy, as I am, we are celebrating these individuals. We're celebrating them throughout what makes Mayopac such a great school district, whether it's academically, whether it's in the sports, whether it's on the stage. And that's what makes us a great institution and a wonderful district, and especially an incredible high school. So, I want to thank all of those individuals. As the public knows, every day you're getting a report on our trends for COVID. And you know, over the past couple of weeks, thank God, we are trending down and continue to trend down. And we are hopeful that that continues as we move along. Also, what's important to understand is that I know this week, meaning on Saturday, we are scheduled to have the awards for our virtual STEM fair here, as well as our wrestling tournament that we have every year. But because of the weather conditions, I'll be making an announcement tomorrow. As some of you know, they don't know what to predict. They're saying it could be two inches. They're saying it can be 20 inches. But what's really important is the wind factor. So, tomorrow we'll be making some announcements based on what Saturday will look like. But it looks like some of these events will have to be postponed and rescheduled. I will also report that, as Mr. Gilligan said, things are moving along. We're having our concerts. This past week, we had our eighth grade and seventh grade band and chorus concerts here at the middle school. They were well-attended. The kids did a great job. We'll have concerts next week here on the first sixth-grade orchestra, also on the first seventh, eighth-grade orchestra, and then band and chorus also here. So, things are moving along. We're excited. Couple of weeks ago, we had our club production by the Drama Club at the high schools. You know, we had full houses. Things went well. The kids did an absolutely great job. I want to thank Ms. Velez and Mr. Per for their patience and understanding. And we talked about resilience, board members. I mean, these students, you know, were patient. We had to make some changes based on COVID. We had to make some changes based on some scheduling as we finished up some of the work. The night I was, happened to be there, trustee McCracken was there, making some, you know, wonderful comments at intermission about introducing some of the graduates from Mayopac High School who have gone on to do drama and music at other schools. So, it really is a great celebration. You know, it's moving forward. Kids are excited about it. Sports are continuing to go on, you know, night in and night out. And we want to just keep up, coming to school, you know, doing the things that we are doing. And hopefully, as we get through the winter and get to the spring, things will even get better. So, board trustees and President Mondi, that's my report for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. DiCarlo, and thank you again and your staff for all that you do and all that you've done through some very, very difficult times. With that, we'll go to committee reports. We have one committee report, it would be my report. Actually, probably Deborah's report, but it's really through me. It's our human resource report. The fruits of that labor are in tonight's consent agenda. We met two weeks ago, just prior to the initial work session. And I know that Deborah and her staff have had their hands full with COVID and the quarantining, getting the teachers and getting teacher aides and backfilling this and doing that. Also, a big shout-out to our people that are doing attendance and doing the subfinder because they've really done a great job. I think at one point, I think we had, we've just been doing a great job keeping the school open and available. And my congratulations to Anthony and his staff and all of our administrators and staff. Great job. What I'd like to do right now is I'd like to motion to accept the See Things Consent Agenda. Can I get a motion, please? Vice President, I, sorry, I have Vice President Savino first. Can I get a second? Senior trustee Lucimisopra, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. So, what I'd like to do right now, just have something real quick before we get to the before we get to the public comments. I see that we have, see, we have several individuals that are, that want to come up and speak to us about the mask issue. As Mr. DiCarlo echoed with regards to the mask issue, I mean, that's, you know, we're aware that it's being reviewed currently right now. It's in the Board of Appeals, and that's empowered to make the decision accordingly. The Mayopac Central School District will continue to have students in the district wear masks until the matter is determined by the appeals court, and will proceed necessary following that outcome. So, what I'd like to do right now, bearing that in mind, we'll start off with our we'll start off with our resident comments. So, again, just let's, you know, I'd like everybody that's here that wants to have the opportunity to speak, I want them to want them to speak. We're certainly here. We're with you and we're listening. So, what I'd like to do right now is call over to our assistant superintendent for business, who is actually serving as our district clerk this evening, as Melody's under the weather. And we wish Melody a speedy recovery as well. So, Sandra, would you mind calling the first person, please?
Dara Berkowitz.
Dara? Hi, Dara, welcome.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to address the board. My name is Dara Berkowitz, and I am a resident of Mayopac. I am proud to say that my son is a graduate of Mayopac Schools. Throughout his time in the Mayopac Schools, he often visited the school library to borrow books of his choice. He was fortunate in that he always found something he was interested in. He was an average student who enjoyed sports and video games. And for Jake, it was easy to find books that reflected his interests and with characters whom he could easily relate. Not all of our students are this fortunate, and that is why I am here today. I am here to represent and advocate for our students, especially those who are typically underrepresented. In addition to being a proud Mayopac resident, I am also Mayopac High School's Library and Media Specialist. I am certified by New York State and have a master's degree in library science in addition to a master's in childhood and special education. Our middle school librarian, also a New York State certified School Library Media Specialist, also has a master's in library science. Between us, we have 23 years in school library and 11 in classrooms. We have been hired by the district because of this vast educational experience and expertise. In my capacity as school librarian, I am charged with advocating for my students and the very great responsibility of protecting my students' freedom to read. I take this role very seriously and will defend and advocate for this right until the end of time. Recent arguments for censoring some of the books in our libraries include that they are sexually explicit and contain sensitive topics that are not appropriate for the age group our libraries represent. However, the content found in these texts is reflective of members of our student population and aligns with School Library Association's statement that libraries have a responsibility to provide the opportunity for students to explore information safely and independently according to their First Amendment rights. The removal of library books on social, political, or moral grounds violates students' First Amendment right to pursue voluntary inquiry as decided in the Supreme Court case of Board of Education versus PICO in 1982. I am a firm believer in a parent's right to guide their children, their own children, reading included. I will always support any parent who makes a reading decision for their child. It is crucial to remember, though, that while parents have the right to make these decisions for their children, they don't have the right to make the decision for the children of others. The attempt to censor age-appropriate books in our school libraries does just that. The American Library Association's Freedom to Read statement includes the following. "It is the responsibility of publishers and librarians as guardians of the people's freedom to read to contest encroachments upon that freedom." It also states, "There is no place in our society for efforts to coerce the taste of others." The board has entrusted me, a New York State certified school librarian, to make these very important decisions for our students. In making these decisions, I know that there will be books on the shelves that may not appeal to all. Some books may include unpopular opinions, controversial topics, and information a reader doesn't agree with. But we have to remember that these make the school library collection well-rounded. But what's even more important and impressive is that our school library, any student, and I mean any student, can find something that they can connect with. We have books representative of authors and characters with various religious and cultural backgrounds, family compositions, gender and sex preferences and experiences, and skin color. In our school library, the materials on our shelves tell every single person who walks through those doors that we do not discriminate, that their thoughts and their feelings and their opinions matter, that they are valued, and that they will always find something. Your Mayopac librarians spend endless hours combing through their collections and their analyses to reevaluate, to identify holes, and find books to fill them. We use diversity audits to ensure that our students, all of our students, have books that are reflective of themselves. Libraries are windows into new worlds and mirrors of our own, and it is an enormous responsibility of mine to make sure that responsibility of mine to make sure that all of my students see it that way and feel comfortable with our collection. We make selections in accordance with board policy and consistent with American Library Association guidelines. Selection is a complicated, multi-step process. All certified librarians receive extensive training on how to choose the materials that are appropriate and meet the needs of the population they serve. I sat in on a Socratic seminar today in Mrs. Hagedorn's English nine-age class, where the discussion was focused on trauma and the impacts that trauma can have on a person's life. They relied very heavily on two books that they read. A question was posed, "Why do we read?" I leave you with the words of the community we serve, our students. We read to think. We read to escape. We read to learn. We read to change patterns. Reading gives the reader something to relate to. Books teach lessons. Books address real-life issues. Books help the reader see from varying perspectives. Removing books containing controversial topics and varying perspectives from our school library shelves is detrimental to the social, emotional, and academic growth of our students. It tells our students that their thoughts, their beliefs, their preferences, and their desires to learn don't matter. Thank you.
Thank you, Dara. Sandra?
Diana Zapp.
Hi, Diana, welcome.
So I want to start by thanking you for your efforts for keeping these kids at school. I know it was hard, but we all learned through this that it's the best place for these kids at school. And we've all fought really hard for that. And when we were finally able to go back to a five-day week, I remember people saying, "Why are you fighting so hard for this?" Hybrid's okay, but in our hearts, we knew that it wasn't right for these kids. The daily emails we get with COVID numbers per school and per grade or grade, it's what should have happened all along. We've been saying for a year, "Why are we quarantining healthy kids?" It took case numbers so high that the state gave up, threw in the towel with the most contagious variant. No, we're not going to do it anymore. But what do we see? We've seen over the past few weeks that the numbers do not reflect that quarantining healthy kids was ever a good idea. We have two student cases today, over six buildings, over 4,000 students, and we haven't been quarantining kids for two or three weeks. Deep down, we knew this all along. When the Supreme Court overturned COVID's mask mandate, many schools said masking was optional. I know they had to retract a day later. But I felt, even if it was just for a day or just for a few hours, that you had the opportunity to say as a district, "We stand for choice," and that didn't happen. Here at all these battles, I was exposed to, we've been villainized, we've been called selfish, we've been told what we have been doing is out of political motivation, not for the love of our children. We all want our kids to be safe. They've done their part. But there's a point in time where we say enough and take our rights as parents' step. I know in my heart, I would fight for what I think is best for my kids, no matter what anyone thinks. And I speak for a lot of parents who don't want to speak up for fear of being judged. So my question for you today is that, if the mandate is overturned, will you support choice? I think every parent in this room, whether they want to keep their masks on the kids or not, they don't need a day to think about it. They already know. They already know. I want to make sure that those children who choose not to mask or not bully, looked down upon, treated differently by students, teachers, staff, and administration, because I know as adults, we are bullied. I walk into stores where masks aren't required, and there's a "not" in my stomach. I'm not going to change my views. I do not put my mask on. But there's a "not" in my stomach. Somebody's going to walk down that aisle and tell me, "They're all looking at you. Oh, you're selfish." But we need to make sure that these kids are not discriminated against when they are able to take these masks off. Thank you.
Thank you, Diana. Sandra?
Dawn Kelly.
Dawn? Hi, Dawn, welcome.
Hi. I have a son in a high school, and I have a nephew and nieces at Fulmer. Actions speak louder than words. That's a pretty common phrase. Wouldn't you agree? You want to know why you're caught in the crosshairs? Let's discuss your actions of this week. As soon as the hearing, I'm sorry, as soon as hearing that the mask mandates were unconstitutional and unenforceable, on Monday evening, other districts immediately reached out to their community and their parents for mask optional. What did Mayapac do? You couldn't even send a message before the high school students got on the bus. Then your message was that you were still going to enforce the mask mandate. The New York Supreme Court ruled unconstitutional, sorry, the New York State Supreme Court ruled unconstitutional and unenforceable, and you decided to ignore it. I'm sorry, is there a new common core definition of court rulings? Or do you just believe you're above the law? Oh, jeez, is that what you're saying up here? I've heard you.
Dawn, Dawn.
When students tried to enforce their constitutional rights, they were threatened with not being able to attend class or school without a mask. These students want to participate in school, and you are denying them that. Your actions on Tuesday led students to have to try to stand up for their own liberty. Bullying students into doing something deemed unconstitutional is downright immoral on your part. What is the consequence of you breaking Mayapac code of conduct? Now let's talk about the email reply referencing 5519A, a civil practice law and rules, seriously? Was that a joke? Was that the best your legal counsel could come up with? It's despicable. You showed us that you are not acting in the best interest of children. I thought maybe, before this meeting, that you stood up for what is, that you were afraid that if you stood up for what was right, you would lose your job. But you've just told us it was the loss of $31 million. Let's talk about another action. When the announcement of this day being put in place came out about 4:30, 5 o'clock, we received a text promptly at 6:19 PM telling us about this day. Why didn't you wait until 6:53 AM the following morning? You had an opportunity. No strike that. You had an obligation to show our children the difference between right and wrong, and you failed. From the start of this pandemic, the focus has been on the elderly and compromised as the most vulnerable. I'm standing here to tell you today, that's wrong. Parents, who are the most vulnerable? Our children. You don't need to be a parent to know this. You just have to be a decent human being. Remember before the pandemic, when we were in the grocery store and we smiled at each other? That's being a decent human being. Stop the nonsense that the children are riddled with COVID and that they're going to spread it like wildfire. Just stop. Let children be children. COVID is not going away. It is here to stay, and we need to push forward. These children are being ignored. They are being deprived of crucial social development, not learning everyday social cues. They're getting sores around their face, troubled with acne. They are getting headaches from oxygen deprivation. But the part that troubles me the most is that it's affecting their mental health. So whatever decision is made on the current mask mandate, know that these parents, and those that weren't able to make it tonight, are going to continue to push for parental choice because it is the right thing to do for our children. And we will hold you accountable for the actions past, present, and going forward.
How about you, Dawn? Sandra? Alicia? Welcome, Alicia.
Yeah. Good evening, Mahopac School Board. Hi, my name is Alicia Stardancer. Before I delve into what I will be speaking about tonight, I would like to give a land acknowledgement. Mahopac Schools is seated on the ancestral homelands of my people, the Wapanger Confederacy. I follow the ways of the Wapanger. I am Wapanger Indian, including the main subjects, Nupim and Suenoi. I am proud to be Native American. I appear tonight on the behalf of the Town of Carmel Historical Society. As a current board member and the secretary, everyone at the Town of Carmel Historical Society would like to extend a helping hand to the school district in providing research sessions with students, field trips, volunteer internships, and more. The Town of Carmel Historical Society would love to help each and every student learn the local history by providing hands-on experience and living history events. We look forward to partnering with the Mahopac Central School District very soon. On another note, I would like to say one more thing. In regards to the Indian mascot, I want everyone to know, it's not a mascot. The proper term is a logo or imagery. Imagery. This debate over this issue is not new. It's been happening for many years now, even since before my grandfather was born. My family, who has been in this area since before the 1600s, are proud of this imagery that you use at Mahopac Central School District. When someone dresses up as a native mascot, that is different and is offensive. My family never left this area, and we still practice our native beliefs, traditions, customs, and values to this day. I am speaking today on the behalf of my family. One native does not speak for all natives. The logo and the Indian name of the Mahopac Schools, my family implemented back in the day. So as long as we are here on Creator's truth, my family, it will not be eradicated. I would like to close with this statement. Don't judge one's way life if you haven't walked in their shoes. Be kind and be respectful. It really isn't that hard. Educate Native American history, the good, the bad, and do not eradicate. Before you comment on social media or speak to someone, let your words pass through free gates. Is it true? Is it necessary? And is it kind? Thank you for your time and for listening to me speak tonight on the behalf of the Town of Carmel Historical Society, my family, and my ancestors. I spoke tonight not because I was ever invited into this conversation in the first place, but because I wanted to tell my ancestors truth. Thank you, Anishin.
Alicia, just a quick update so that you understand. They're in session right now, and there is a bill that is being discussed, I'm sure you know, to do away with logos or mascos, mascots that represent Indians. So it'll be very interesting to see what the state decides to do. So thank you for your passion and your discussion. I have had this discussion over and over again. It's Mahopac. It is an Indian name. It is who we have become. To your point, you know, there's things, and I agree with you, about education and the like, but it is, it's something that may be out of our control. I don't know, but I will let you know, it is being discussed. Assemblyman Byrne called me yesterday to let me know that it was being discussed in committee up there, and the state is possibly looking away, looking to do away with it as a part of a law. So I just share that with the community. It's up there. It's being discussed. It's beyond our control. Thank you very much for your eloquence, for coming up, explaining your passion. I knew a gentleman by the name of Greg Amato, okay? And Mr. Amato had a passion like you have, and that poor gentleman, if he were alive right now, he'd be up here with you, giving you the history and telling you a little bit about it. So thank you very much. I appreciate it. I know he would be very, very proud of you, young lady.
He's very impressive.
Yes, well, thank you very much. He'd be very proud. Thank you again.
Sandra?
Amato?
Jack?
All right, good evening. So I didn't write anything out. I wrote notes. My daughter was going to get them, she probably a little nervous. But I said, "You hear everyone clapping? These are our friends. We've known most of you for two years." So I wanted to make a statement, and my editor, you know, is my wife, said, "You need to follow with the statement, right?" I'll make it with examples. So I'm going to start with what I was going to end with. For two years, I've been listening to socio-emotional well-being from most of you. I don't want to hear those words out of any of your mouths ever again, okay? What's going on with lunch? I gave you two months to fix the lunch situation. What was she going to tell you when she come up here? Lunch is cold when they get it. And I think I, two months ago, I challenged you all to eat as fast as they have to eat. Has anyone taken me up on that? Crickets, thank you. All right? Why don't we have a lunch in the cafeteria? 400 kids can have lunch in the cafeteria, probably this size in New York City, no mask, everyone eating in one shot. You can't get 25 kids to sit in a classroom and eat? A classroom, 25 kids? Kids can play sports together, but you have to split gym up? You have to have gym in the cafeteria and gym in the gym? Maybe that's why we can't use the cafeteria for lunch, for the kids to spread out and then eat together. Why can't the kids socialize during their recess, when they're not eating, when they have to sit there for 20 minutes, 15 minutes, whatever it is, watching the other kids eat? They have to, they, hey, hey, that's it. My kids don't know how to play with other kids. Are you kidding me? Socio-emotional well-being, right? When are parents going to be allowed back into school? I know we have, we have the concerts. I'll step foot in the middle school again for a concert on Tuesday. I'm happy. I can't bring something in for my kids for their birthday to share with their class. I can't come in. Oh, yeah, that's right. It's cold out. I have to stand outside to pick my kids up. So are you going to make all of us freeze this winter? Because I can't walk inside the building? Are you kidding me? Why are we still using one staircase up and one staircase down? Like was mentioned earlier, you send out the facts every day about the COVID cases, right? The boogeyman's gone. Let the kids be back. You saw it, two kids today, right? Come on, what are you doing here? We need to stop bringing the Chromebooks back and forth, okay? You want to send Chromebooks back and forth? I get it. Then you know what? It's 2022. Pick a form. Is it a Chromebook or is it a textbook? Pick one. The next thing is, at what point, we, and we get some, I'll give you that, we do get some, but at what point are we going to start getting answers here while we're all here in front of you and not, I'll send you an email later on? Sometimes, listen, Mr. Carlo, you are good with giving answers. I will give you that. You do give answers, but there are plenty of times where we don't get answers. And they take a couple of weeks to get an email. We may have to respond back with another email. And then sometimes we get, give me a call. No, put it in writing. If you stand by what you say, put it in writing. Or are you too afraid to put things in writing because we will hold it against you? Because for the last two years, we've had everything. You rather say voice by voice? Not, sometimes not acceptable. We need to move on. We need to move on. Socio-emotional well-being, you're screwing my kids up, man. And it's not just you. It's this country. If you guys are affecting my family, it needs to change. And we need, let's find out what happens tomorrow morning, like Diana said. I don't even need to wait. My kids can go to school without my mask. What about it? Done. You're going to have to finish the sentence. I'm sure you'll have everyone answer whichever way he goes. Thank you.
Nicholas Fusco?
Nick? Nick Fusco, Nick?
Daniella Volchak?
Daniella.
Daniela.
Hi, everyone. Thank you. Many of you know me and many of you don't. I have two daughters at Lakeview. I have a kindergartner and a second grader. And to kind of piggyback on a lot of what everybody's saying, social emotional health, trying to get things back to normal. I have amazing teachers at our school. I am blessed that my girls have, who I want to say are always the most caring, sweet, loving teachers that I could ask for. And Mrs. Pontillo is cream of the crop. I'm not going to go on about the masks. Most of you again know how I feel. I'm per choice. I'm part of the committee. Actually, since I'm going to go into that, I'm wondering if we heard anything back from where the letters have gone? Have we gotten anything back from the governor? Or any of the assemblymen, our county executive? Have we got any responses back? So that's one question.
So I sent out the letters to the committee. As far as I know, we have not gotten any response from the folks that we sent it to. So we sent that, I believe it was around Christmas time, maybe the 23rd of December. So it's about a month ago. I mean, if whatever is appropriate to find out, we'll follow up. And I'm not quite prepared.
So, yeah, I was just wondering if we got any responses. Again, I stand by our schools, our choice, our voice. So again, choice is what we're asking for. And with that, I'm asking if it's possible for our grades K through two to begin learning normally, the way they should, in groups. They need their reading rugs back. They need their tables back. Our kindergartners are not supposed to be learning in desks and not socializing. I know for a fact that Brewster and Lakeland already have their reading rugs and their tables back, and they're having circle time, and they're learning the way they should. So my question is, when can we start to at least bring some normalcy back? I know that we're back in five days. That's great. My kids struggled again with the social mental health issues. So being in school five days is key for me. However, now we need to start moving forward. I don't want to keep hearing we're moving backwards. I want to know when the younger grades can start learning the way they'll retain the information properly. They're not going to retain the way third grader, fourth grader, or fifth grader were sold. The little ones need to interact. They need to see smiles. They need nurturing. It's not just school. So they need to have fun. And bringing back our reading rugs and tables, to me, is going to get that going. So that was another one. And again, I hate to be a dead horse here, but again, you know, I'm pro-choice. You choose to be vaccinated, that's on you. You choose to wear your mask, that's on you. I divulge the information. I was vaccinated, but I do not wear a mask anywhere but literally in this building. We have had barely any positive cases and watching the statistics come through. And I want to know, which I know you've already kind of touched upon, the stance on removing the mask mandate based on tomorrow's decision. Like Jack and Diana had spoken, if you know you're going to mask your child, you're going to end up masking your child. If you don't want to mask your child, there's already a bunch of parents that know that they're not going to mask their child. So we just want to know that you have our back. That's part of the committee that we're on, and we're going to deal with other issues moving forward. But we just want to know that you hear us, and we're ready to support whatever decision you make as long as it's correct.
Chris, welcome.
How's it going? Can you hear me? All right. My name's Chris Harrigan. My son's in sixth grade here in the middle school. I just, I don't know if we touched about it. I got it a little late. We had some basketball practice running late. But for the new people tonight, I did want to put out that the board has, we've formed a Mayapac advocacy committee comprised of board members and members of the community, parents. And we are working on some of these topics that we're discussing and things as they come up. Obviously, COVID mandates and things like that are top priority, but there's other things. We always say we would like to get to education. That'd be nice, to discuss matters of education. But I just wanted to put that out, and I'm very thankful that that's taking place. When we talk to other people in other districts, they don't, we say we have an advocacy committee. They kind of look at us like, oh, what's that? So I do thank you for that. So my comments tonight are going to be directed to the board. Mr. DeCarlo, while they may be harsh, I truly appreciate that you are all seated here tonight. Okay? You are here, but the people we'd like to see here are not. We'd love to see the district, is the district's legal counsel here? Because we'd love to see them here. They're not here. So we'd love to see them, the people that make these decisions that affect the whole community. We would love to get some feedback from them. We'd also like to see a representative from the Mayapac Teachers Association. Is anyone here tonight from the Mayapac Teachers Association? Awesome. All right, thank you. Awesome, awesome. Because we do have a lot of concerns that we'd like to bring back to the teachers. It's great to see you. Thank you so much. So I wanted to share the results of a survey conducted by the Putnam County Department of Health in late October 2021. I don't know if I shared them with the board, but I can email that. But parents, it's important to know, almost eight hundred people, or over eight hundred people completed this. That represented a total of 1,150 children. When asked, "When the COVID vaccine becomes available for children five to 11 years old, will you be interested in getting your child vaccinated?", 52% of respondents said that they would not get their child vaccinated. So these are, this is, people in the community has tremendous support. And after this past December, I would imagine even more parents would say no to that. I myself personally conducted a survey last fall of three hundred parents, three hundred and thirty parents in just Mayapac district alone. And I had asked them multiple questions. One of them that I had asked would, you know, "What would you do if the COVID vaccine was mandated for your child?" Thirteen percent said they would leave the state entirely. I didn't ask what state. Probably Florida. And another 32% stated that they would homeschool or seek some other private option. I know I brought this up before, but I think that represents a very, it's a big deal for our district if we're going to lose this many students. All right? So again, I guess my whole feeling is of disappointment. And I'm constantly hearing from members of the board that you've lived in Mayapac for 35 years, or lived here my whole life, or I went to Mayapac High School. And I constantly hear something to that, or refrain to that effect. And what we want to know here tonight as parents is, you know, when will you get involved on behalf of the town? Will it be when parents pull their kids out over the vaccine? Is that when we're going to see like a true active involvement? Or when people move out of the state? And then at that point, it's too late. All right, we want to return to normal. We don't want quarantines. We don't want tests. We don't want masks. We know that schools have to follow certain guidelines, but these guidelines are beginning to run counter to the health, well-being, and education of our children. All right, at some point, this is the greatest disruption to our children's education, to the education system in the United States that we'll probably ever see in our lifetime. And I guess we just want to see an involvement that would equal that from the school. And lastly, I know we've touched on it, but, and I know it's not a question-and-answer format, but the members of this community need to know how our board feels about masking. And we are asking for the board to put this matter to a vote. Board elections are coming up, and we need to know where the board members stand. If we don't hear how the current board members feel about this issue, then we are going to assume that you wholeheartedly agree with all of you in this matter, and then we will vote accordingly.
Mr. Harrington, before you sit down. Thank you. I would be remiss if I didn't make a follow-up comment.
Sure.
And I know some of you were in the audience six months ago. When I talked six months ago about a matrix, I called up Senator Harmon. I called up Assemblyman Burn. Okay? Six months ago. Now all of a sudden, everybody wants a matrix and letters are being written on behalf of, you know, Lola Hudson Council and everything else like that. So that's important to understand, because at the end of the day, to me, it's hurtful. It's very hurtful. Because I happen to agree with a lot of what's being said on one person. On one person, okay? That's ridiculed constantly on social media, that's maligned, that things are said about. Okay? And I understand what you and a lot of the other people are saying. But at the end of the day, okay? These are the individuals who make these decisions. And to your point, just like you challenged this whole entire board, every single person is up this year in the state of New York. Okay? So now is the time. They're all up there now. What are you talking about? I understand your angst and your anxiety. I truly do. I really do. I get it. But at the end of the day, we have to have the people who make those decisions ultimately accountable. Because at the end of the day, that's what it's all about. And I get it. I understand you, Mr. Harrington. You and I have sat down and had those conversations personally over the summer. Okay? But that's the important piece to this. They're all up there now. They're having these conversations, right? And you know what the ruling says, right? The ruling is that the governor never had the authority. So now the conversation should be had with these senators and with the assembly. What are you going to do if it gets sent to you? We can't do that. They have to do that. So I just mention that because a lot of this, we are together. But now we have that opportunity, like you said, to be proactive, to have those conversations now. So I thank you. I know your passion. I get it. But I just wanted to share with you, because a lot of what you're saying, I clearly understand, and I am, to the best of my ability, trying to do what I can. So thank you for listening. I appreciate it.
All right, thank you.
You know, Chris, just remember that the ad hoc committee, okay, which we're all, this board supported a resolution, okay, asking, in fact, begging for control from the state. And it was sent to all the assembly. It was sent up to the governor's office and all the assembly and our state senators. So I don't think it's a, I think you know where the board stands, because we adopted it. I mean, it was, you know, on a full, we adopted the statement and sent it and sent it forward. So I think that we've been, I think we're right there, and we're close. The pressure's on. So, Jack.
I have a question regarding.
No, Jack. Jack, just hold on one second, please. Thank you, Jeff. I'm sorry.
Yeah, I.
But that's all I wanted to say, is that we have a statement that went up there. And to Anthony's point, this is time. It's pressure time. It's time to put the pressure on the assembly. To Anthony's point, everybody's up for election. Well, you know, that's it. Make your voices heard. I know I'm going to. I'll tell you that.
Yeah, I guess, you know, more of a global sense of the school. Like now that we're two years in, and we still have kids eating on the ground, and we have kids that can't take their mask off for a speech. You know, I just expected as someone who's not a teacher, you know, teachers to be up in arms over this as well before, at an earlier point. I can't believe that we're two years into this. I would think this is really affecting teachers' profession. I would expect them to be outraged at what's going on. And I guess I'm just disappointed that it's taking.
Okay, yeah, thank you.
I do appreciate the work that the board has.
Thank you, Chris. I appreciate that. Thanks. Okay. Sandra? Christina? Here we go, Christina.
How are you?
Good, welcome.
I'm Christina Lozardo. I'm the mother of two little boys who attend Austin Road School. I have nothing but positive thoughts and feelings about Austin School. They're magnificent. However, an incident happened. Obviously, you guys are well aware. I've been touched several times this evening of the rule that came out. Tuesday morning, I did. I was one of the parents that decided to bring my children to school on masks that morning. However, they were denied access to be put into the school because of the fact they were on masks. Reason being, because like I said, the Supreme Court came out and stated that they were lifting the mask mandate. And of course, I took them to school that morning with the intention of them having an education that morning. I was very disappointed at the fact that the turnaround matter was that they were not able to come in. I am anti, I'm not anti-mask. I'm nothing but pro-choice. Documentation was made that day. I did call the police enforcement. However, nothing with the current events and everything that was taking place, nothing had been done. I just did my reporting and did the right thing as a parent. My boys mean everything to me. I would go above and beyond for them, teaching them to stand up for their rights, because that day, they had rights. That day, we all had rights. And the fact that I had to turn around with my seven-year-old and my 10-year-old, very disappointed and not understanding as to why, since they had a right. Because yes, as a mom and as a parent, I don't baby my children. I talk to them like adults. I teach them what their rights are. I teach them when to stand up for themselves. And that's what we did that day. I proudly went home and I taught my children at home with no shame. And you know what my boy said to me that evening? "Thank you, Mom." And 10 years from now, they're going to thank me even more because their parents stood up and fought up for their rights. And that's all I want to say. And seeing how the fact that this season, normalcy is going on, our children don't need this abuse. They need an education. They need to come back into school happy, smiling, and being able to read people's mouths and their teachers as they speak to them and read to them. We need normalcy. We don't need this anymore. That's all I want to say.
Hi, Val. Welcome.
Hi, thank you. Good evening, parents and community members, teachers, board of education, and administrators. So I came here tonight with something prepared to say. And I'm hearing a lot of anger and frustration, and rightfully so. And one of the speakers tonight asked how teachers felt about all of this that's going on. And I can't speak for all teachers, but I can speak for myself. I've been in the district for 26 years. I started April 1st of 1996, so short of a couple of, a couple of, a couple of months short of 26 years. And I came out tonight to, well, one, to say thank you to the Board of Ed because on April 1st of 1996, I felt like I was the luckiest person in the world to get a job as a teacher in Mayapac. And I still feel the same today. I feel very lucky, and I have the best job in the world. I'm also frustrated because I am a parent of two teenagers. And while we don't live in Mayapac, my kids go to public school, and they have been masked, just like all of your kids. And I have been masked, and I cannot smile at my students. And that is terrible. It's terrible that I can't read my students' facial expressions. So to say that I am frustrated is an understatement. But I believe that most of us are frustrated beyond belief. As teachers, as administrators, we go to meetings now, even though our meetings are in person, and we still look at each other through these masks, like it's crazy. Like this is not normal. There's nothing normal about communicating with people without being able to read facial expressions. So it is frustrating. It makes, I think, most of us very angry as parents and as educators. And you can feel that tension. I think that's an understatement to say. You can all feel that in this room tonight. And I know, Mr. DeCarlo and Board of Ed, this is not the first time you're hearing this frustration. So I want to acknowledge that we have been through a lot. And again, I think that's an understatement. In addition to navigating the usual ups and downs of life in general, the past two years of COVID has brought us to our wit's end. This global pandemic has forced us to do things that are not normal so that eventually we can get back to normal. Unfortunately, we know that many of the things that we have had to do, and that really, as the board has acknowledged, our hands have been tied. Many of the things that we have had to do. Many of the things that we have had to do to get back to normal have created problems of their own, especially for our kids. As many parents have acknowledged tonight, youth mental health is suffering. And these struggles have increased significantly across the country. Our Surgeon General, Dr. Vivek Murthy, recently issued an advisory declaring youth mental health as an urgent public health crisis. As parents and as educators, this crisis may feel like one more thing that is beyond our control. And I don't know about, um, the board and our administrative cabinet and parents, but I have been feeling out of control. We have lost control over our everyday existence and doing things normally. There was a time early on in the pandemic, if you remember, when we were bringing our groceries in from the supermarket and leaving them outside to disinfect because we had no idea what was going on, great, that was. It, it's just the, we didn't know, so we did what we thought we had to do. So, this crisis, again, is one more thing that is making us feel out of control. So what can we do to get some control back? Perhaps we're looking more closely at ourselves, our community, and our schools. We hear some things that sound threatening to our physical or emotional safety. We may see things that contradict what we've been taught or what we believe to be right. We love our kids, and that is clear from the words we're hearing tonight. And we don't want them to be exposed to anything more that could hurt them. And the feeling now, I think from a lot of us, a lot of people, educators and board members and administrators, is that at what point are we harming, right, with all of this stuff that we've had to do to be normal? Um, versus COVID, right, there's, what does he know? There's a lot that we know, there's a lot that we don't know. So, I think it is important to acknowledge that right now, as a district, as teachers and as parents, we are all doing the best that we can. As a parent and as an educator, I have been asked by friends and family members about some of the classroom lessons, materials, and books that have created a great deal of national controversy in recent months. And I know that this is not part of the masking and the COVID pandemic, but I think it all ties together. It feels like when we are looking to gain control of something that is out of our control, we grasp for things that are within our reach. The Board of Ed is here, we can talk to you, we can come to see you in person, and we can ask for your help, even if something is not in your control. But it's what we are doing. So, in my sense, and I guess teaching help is what really puts me in, in the crossroads of this, I'm seeing a connection. So, throughout this COVID pandemic, we are hearing about fears, and we are hearing about anxiety, about other things going on in the world that impact our youth and our community. We may be fearful of some of the things we're hearing about the materials used in class, the books, the lessons and activities. And I would like to share my thoughts on this. As a parent and as an educator here for 26 years, as a school system, I see it as our primary mission to provide the highest quality learning experience possible for every student. And while each student is unique, we know that for all students, the most powerful and memorable learning experiences are those that connect with a child's experiences and emotions. In other words, students sitting in a classroom must feel that the lesson relates to them. It was explained to me once this way. Our classrooms contain both mirrors and windows. Students must see themselves reflected in our classroom libraries, word problems, posters, art, and music. They must also be able to see the world outside of their own. They must learn about the experiences of others that are unlike them, not to create ill will, not because they are being taught to be like them, or because they are being taught to not like themselves. But because they can only develop the skills of critical thinking, empathy, and compassion if they are exposed to the genuine experiences of others. With enough windows and mirrors, we are able to give our students the gift of learning. And I cannot imagine being able to, to provide this gift without the classroom books, materials, and resources created through the lived experiences of diverse human beings. White, black, and brown, straight, gay, and transgender, Christian, Jewish, Buddhist, Muslim, and many, many more. Thank you, Mr. DiCarlo, along with the entire administrative team and the Board of Education, because you have invested in this. You have invested in social, emotional learning, diversity, equity, and inclusion education, despite the fact that some of these topics have received ill attention in the media. Your commitment to the professionals that are working very hard and entrusted to make sure that we have the resources that we need to reach all students, especially those that have been marginalized and left out in the past, is visible, and it is felt, and it matters to us. Our students and community deserve nothing less, and I am grateful for this opportunity to advocate on their behalf. And I can't wait for the masks to be gone, I just have to say. I wonder anyone who likes them, thank you.
Thanks, Val, thank you. Uh, Sandra, next?
Melissa Beer.
Melissa Beer, come on up. Hi, Melissa, welcome.
Hello. So, good evening, everyone. Um, I know Mr. DiCarlo have received my emails. Um, there were a few things that I wanted to touch upon, and I know many parents have already. One was a question that I didn't get answered from a while back, which was, if the school board, the Maybach School Board, is on the National Board Association? I never got an answer to that. Um, so I'm still waiting on that. And now, second, this is really concerning me to the point that I'm disgusted. I don't have a child in elementary school here, but I'm going to mention that there are children in former Road Elementary School and Austin Road Elementary School that are being forced to sit on the floor to eat lunch in the hallway. If you're worried about COVID, you're not worried about the germs of all of the shoes that are, are walking up and down and they're sitting there eating their lunch? I mean, that is just, I, I, I cannot tell you how angry that makes me. They're eating lunch on a floor in a hallway just to divide because you can't have so many kids. Maybach High School is filled, the cafeteria is filled with kids. That's child abuse. That is a child abuse, and I'm going to tell you why it's child abuse. Because if one of those children came to school and told their teacher, "I have to eat my dinner on the floor because I'm not allowed to sit with the rest of the family," you would call ACS, or whatever you're talking about here. But ACS would be called. ACS would be called for a child not being able to sit with a large family. And there, and you know it would be done. I work in the school system. It would be done. Same thing that the children should not be sitting on a floor. In Austin Road, I'm not sure about the other school, and in former Road, sitting to eat lunch in whatever few minutes that they have. When I heard that, more, from more than one parent, I was appalled. I was so, so upset because I, I just can't get over that. It's inhumane. It's actually inhumane that you're making children sit on the floor like you're putting them, like, like a dog. My dog gets to sit on a, on the sofa. And you have children sitting on a floor, eating lunch. That's inhumane. The prisoners in prison and jail get treated better than that. That has to stop, like, that has to be put out tonight to the principals, that is not to happen. That cannot happen. If I hear that happens tomorrow, then I don't know what I have to do to report child abuse in the school. Because that is child abuse, that is inhumane. It is inhumane, there's no other words for it. And it has to stop. I, I really, I'm going to be getting the text and the call to see, and the children better not be sitting on a floor eating like, like an animal. That's my first point. Second, I'm not going to go into the mask, we've heard all, we heard from a teacher about the mask, we heard from all of the parents, you know where I stand on it. One thing I do have to say, though, is that we had control on Tuesday. There was a court order by the Supreme Court, and we had the control. We had the right. That was the law then. This is a mandate that is on right now, not a law. There's bills or whatever that need to be passed, it's not a law. On Tuesday, you had students being brought to the office, you had students, um, getting phone calls home stating, "Oh, well, you know, we don't want kids to get in trouble." They, they didn't need, you had 36 school districts throughout New York State. 36 school districts, mostly in Long Island, and you even had some neighboring Westchester schools that made it optional. And they were sent out an email the night before stating, "It is optional until we see what happens next." We did not join 36 other school districts. It could have been more, but I think I counted about 36. So we did have that right. We had the right, the children had the right, that mother with her two children had that right to sit in class that day. That was a Supreme Court order. There was no excuse for that, I'm, I'm sorry, I heard what you said, but I, I, I'm sorry, it is, it's, it's scary to think that what happens tomorrow, I'm not that hopeful, trust me, I'm not. Not in this corrupt judicial system right now. But what happens on Friday, if they say, "Hey, the decision is upheld, it's optional." And the, the Board of Ed's going to come down and say, "Oh, no, 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 oh, gosh, no." And then what are you going to do? You're going to state again? You're going to state it again and say, "Oh, well, we have to wait for directives." No, it's a court order, we had one day to let our kids be free. That leads to parents not being still allowed in the building. I requested an in-person meeting about an incident. It's not honored. And that's, that's getting ridiculous already. That parent, and I'm not saying that you can't, you know, have a limit to, like, you know, 100 parents coming in and out a day, but there's a matter. What happened to where we used to sit down when there's an incident with a child, bullying and stuff? I can't even go into, into a, a school anymore. I have to wait outside. And it, it has to stop, we have to get back to, to normalcy. Um, then, the last thing I do want, and this came up, I was offended. I was really offended by something today. We parents are not censoring topics that are in school libraries. We are making sure that they are appropriate and they are not explicit. We were portrayed today as though we are discriminating against certain groups, that we are not. I came up here in the last meeting, if they listened, and I spoke on behalf of what my son had stated in the LGBT community. Okay? And I stated it for the whole Maybach to hear. It is not saying that a topic can't be discussed, but what is in these books, they're explicit. The words, the language, the sexual, um, encounters that the children are reading about, that is inappropriate, that should not belong in a school. Not the topic. They're not a parent in the year that's telling their kid, "Oh, you don't read that book that's about LGBT person." No, that's not what it is, it's what's in it. It's what's in it. Thank goodness that we didn't have that book, that comic book with those explicit, um, photos. If that, what is, when, what was in Carmel that was taken off, if that was here, if, if my kid or one of the kids would have went into school, like, in elementary school, like, fifth, sixth, seventh grade, and brought it in, you would have been calling us and said, "They have sexual explicit material on them, they're showing their other children." You have to think and turn the tables around. Because that's what would have happened, if that comic book would have been brought in by a sixth grader showing it around. The school would have called and said, "Oh, they're sharing, you know, sexually explicit stuff, this is not, you know, appropriate to bring to school." It's the same thing, it's not the topics. We're not telling any child that they can't read certain things. If something isn't certain, however she said it, you know, 14 years and plus, and it's risky, a parent, a guardian should be able to approve a child to take it out. That's what we're asking for. That it shouldn't just be able, no child should just be able to go pick up a book showing things such as, um, I, I can't even say it because I, I'm too embarrassed to even say. I, I wouldn't even speak like that to my kid, I wouldn't even talk with my friends like what I read in these books that are up there. And that's what we're talking about. It's not about the freedom, not about that. They, the thing is that they're speaking on behalf of other communities that they know nothing about. I have a child at home, part of that community. I showed him what was in those books, I showed it to his friend, they're 26 years old, they were appalled. They said they would, they've never seen that in their life. Gay, transgender friend, they're in my house, whatever. They were shocked. They were shocked. So I want to just leave you with one quote. And this is by Eli Riesel, he's a famous author, some of you may know. Silence encourages the tormentor, never the tormented.
Sandra? Davia?
Good evening.
Thank you, Davia.
President Valman, board members, Secretary DiCarlo, board members, thank you. Um, my name is Davia Gay, I am a resident of Maybach and also a social worker at the high school. Welcome, everyone. Um, I wanted to, um, kind of, even though Val Man is a tough act to follow, to echo her sentiments about the frustration, you know, that we can clearly all feel. You know, I, I share that frustration. I too very much look forward to when we can get back to normalcy. It's been really hard for all of us, big and small. And I can say that, you know, I'm there for your kids, I'm going to be with our kids in the high school, and whose kids will be in the high school. God willing, I'm still there, I'm going to still be there and be there for the kids, um, to help them to be able to manage these things that life throws us, whether it's those, us as a community as a whole, or individuals, neighbors. That is why I'm there and that is what I will continue to do. So I am really proud to be here tonight to just say a few words about the quality education, both academic and socio-emotional that we offer our Maybach community. of both academic and socio-emotional that we offer our Mayeapack community. And the goal of that education is to prepare our students, as we always talk about, about, to prepare our students for college, to prepare our students for career, and to prepare our students to be global citizens, meaning an awareness and an understanding of the wider world. And a key component to that readiness is compassion. None of this is possible without including the voices and experiences of individuals and groups who have for a long time been marginalized or left out. There has been recent attention, as we've been speaking about in our nation, to the movement to exclude certain voices and experience from books and lessons in school. We would be shortchanging our children by excluding these voices and experiences. From a 2020 NEA article, quote, "A good book can help you understand what it is like for people who don't share your race, religion, sexual orientation, or socioeconomic status. Diverse books teach empathy," end quote. That is what we mean by windows, as we've been talking about. When we talk about mirrors, we mean what a black teacher said in the same article about what were called reluctant readers when he went to school. Quote, "This was not by accident. It was unintentional, but it was structural, and the only books available to us didn't have us in them," end quote. When students see themselves reflected in the books they read and the history they learn, it is personally validating and academically engaging. And it's more. For example, as one author puts it, "Removing books and lessons about LGBTQ experience can be like cutting a lifeline for youth." I don't know how many people are aware, but 42% of LGBTQ youth have seriously considered suicide in the past year. I will add to the quote. "I am working for a world in which diversity is seen as a source of celebration rather than a cause for alarm." And that is attributed to Toni Morrison. Thank you.
Thank you, Davya. Sandra?
Catherine Bellantoni.
Thank you, Catherine, welcome.
Hi, thank you. My name's Kate Bellantoni. I wasn't planning on speaking tonight, but given the comment from our library media specialist, I do feel the need to say that I had a very pleasant conversation with each principal today regarding my concerns about the books in the library. It was a very, it was a very nice conversation. Rather than getting defensive, I do believe that if all parties work together, we will be able to make some system changes that will make everyone happy. I'd like to add, they actually complimented the media specialist today in the meeting. I stated that I was really happy to see some books like Gender Queer and Long Boy not in our library, and that we're doing an okay job, and with some tweaks, I think we could do better and, and be great. And lastly, because I, I guess I wasn't clear back in December when I came here to talk, I want to reiterate that I care about all children and all of their needs with age-appropriate books. And Dara, if I get a chance, I look forward to bouncing ideas off each other. Thank you.
Thank you. I want to thank, I want to, I know how difficult it is, and you've heard me say this before, how difficult it is to, to get up there and speak, speak up in front of the, well, the audience and of course addressing the superintendent and the school board. So thank you very much, it takes a lot of courage, and the Board and I, certainly, the superintendent and support staff certainly appreciate that and everything that, and for being here, and thank you for that very much. So what we're gonna do right now is we've got some, we're gonna go into, we're gonna motion to go into executive session, we have, we have just a brief, a couple things that we're gonna do. Executive session will be on our, on our superintendent search. So what I'd like to do right now is wish everybody, again, you know, listen, we're at the, I think we're at the, I think we're at the finish line, I, I'd like to think that. So what I'd like to do right now is I'd like to motion to go into executive session. Can I get a motion, please?
Oh, move.
Thank you, Michael Martin, can I get a second, please?
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much, everyone, please stay safe.